Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Enfield State Board to order. We are starting this evening. We have two public hearings. They are not related to one another, so we'll take them in succession. So to start, I would entertain a motion to open the hearing to discuss and accept one or more donations to the Community Nursing Fund in the amount of $30,000 or more in aggregate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're in the public hearing. Just to remind everybody, please say your name for the undertaker of what we speak. Hopefully, this one's straightforward. This is a donation to the Community Nursing Fund from the Jack New York Burn Foundation in the amount of $30,000. Incredibly generous, the Burn Foundation. Are there any comments from the board?
Incredible donation, once again. Highly appreciated for all this support.
That's really important.
All right, members of the public?
I'll go back. Yeah, people said, right? He's on the line.
All right, and I do not see any hands up online, so entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, so now the board will deliberate and take action.
I make a motion to accept the donation by the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation to the Community Nursing Program in the amount of $30,000, but thanks.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Close. Accept the donation with great thanks to Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation. All right, our second hearing this evening. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing to discuss and take action on the use of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for police salaries.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, so we are in the public hearing now. Ed, would you just give us a rundown of where we are?
Yeah, I'll give you a rundown. As we've talked at a couple meetings now, there's a proposal to use our coupons to offset police salaries. The original was, as we've mentioned in the past, you know, it's not really moving money around, but use ARPA funds as grant funds, because that's what they are, to offset some of the salaries for police. And I'm asking, talk about that a little bit more, for this to be more public safety than just police. But, you know, we had talked in the past that it would open up funds to use some other things. I do have some pretty good news. I'm still a little bit concerned about the budget with the extra public safety building.
You got the change, but I have the part behind me.
Still a little bit concerned about the budget with the extra public safety billing payment that we needed to make, but as of right now, it looks like we'll have about $100,000 in healthcare benefit savings from bringing on a police officer a little late. And then we had two budgeted plans, two-person plans, which is what we budgeted for open positions. And as we filled those positions, we've had two people choose the one single-person plan, which is cheaper. So with that, we have some cost savings, so that's good news for the budget overall. And then I continue to work with department heads to manage their budgets and to find savings, where we can find savings. So as of right now, I don't know that I can say we're going to cover that entire 170, but we're definitely moving in the right direction, and we're getting close to that. We've also had a little bit of discussion about the elevator at Whitney Hall. I went through allowances with them. We had allowances for, you know, roofing and structural problems and those types of things. As we go through, they didn't know what to budget, so they just put an allowance aside. Luckily, as we tore into Whitney Hall, we didn't find a lot of structural problems and rot and things that we thought we might find. So as of right now, it looks like we're going to have enough money in that budget to absorb the elevator costs, which we were hoping when we move that forward. So really, just wanted to focus back on what to do with those ARPA funds. We do have one other budget problem that has come up. I'm going to call it a blessing and a curse at the same time. We budgeted our EMS position or payroll at kind of what we've been trending. Luckily, I'm going to say, our EMS force has grown. They've been responding more, which has increased our costs in salaries, and they are now exceeding what we've budgeted, and their overall bottom-line budget is, we're going to surpass that for sure. Kind of an ebb and flow thing, because we pay Lebanon for last year's calls this year, so we should see a cost savings into next year, because it's cheaper if our people respond than if we pay Lebanon to respond, but it doesn't help us with the 2024 budget. I don't really want to go to EMS and say, hey, stop responding. So that's a, it's a budget problem that we're going to be dealing with moving forward, but if we did offset this, and you'll see my recommendation today is to change from offsetting police salaries, even though that would kind of still do the same thing, I think it's a little more clear to say, make these payments for public safety payments, and then we can allocate some money into the ambulance program to help offset those. The rest would go towards police salaries, and that's what the ARPA fund would be spent on. The talk before would be that that would just leave a little bit of surplus in the budget, which would allow a select board in the future to look at where that money might be able to be spent, and it would allow for the complete consumption of the ARPA funds, not having to guess on a total. With that, that's kind of where we're at right now. I think we're sitting in a pretty good spot on the elevator and the budget, but it's still, the budget's probably the one that has me a little bit more worried than any other one.
Any additional comments from the board?
There's a question related to the ambulance. Like, I know, obviously, we still have to budget the expense on the expense lines, and the revenue isn't offset on the opposite side of the equation, but are we taking in revenue? And the reason I ask is, in the past, we've had issues with billing, and we've changed our practices.
Yeah, we're doing, okay? We're doing much better, but as you guys have probably heard before, on the ambulance billing, an average year, a decent year, is about 33%, and we're right on par for bringing that back in with the soft billing that we do. That's about what we can expect to come back. So we are doing better. I had heard before, you guys may know the number better, but it was closer to 15% before we switched the way we were doing things in companies. So for bringing those in, I just checked them about a month ago, and we're on track to that 30, 33%.
Okay, any comments from the board?
I still have a preference to, if you will allow me to use the word, stretch the ARPA money by applying it to a capital expense, meaning the elevator, which would relieve the bond from paying for the elevator. And I understand that we've done successfully manage the capital fund for the building well, but if we relieve ourselves of the elevator cost and pay for it with ARPA funds, and then possibly some CIP funds, the two combinations together, $135,000 for the elevator, will save us $232,000 in the bond over the 30-year period. So I believe that that's a way to stretch the funds. If we only use the $104,000 from ARPA only and come up with the rest of it somewhere else, that still saves $178,000. So we're talking substantial amounts of sums over a 30-year cycle, and I believe that's a good way to stretch the ARPA money. I know if that means we have to cross the line as far as coming up with the funds for, whether it is the ambulance group or police funds, but I believe that we can work through that. But I believe in stretching the money.
Any comments from the public? I saw a hand up in the back.
Terrence Braden. I'm wondering how much it costs when you have to send out an ambulance to someone, and who absorbs that cost? Do they pay a part of it?
So the, we, as a town, pay the cost upfront, and then there's a billing service that bills their insurance, if there is. And as Ed said, in a general year, we recover a third of the expenses. So we'll bill, if we bill $100, we'll recover $33 in a typical year, so.
Now, is that because insurance doesn't pay the full amount, or that many people don't have insurance?
I think it's the prior, but I don't know the, I don't know the mix of that.
The insurance will pay some. There's a lot of deductions from insurance companies that'll happen, but then, you know, most insurance, there's deductibles and copays and those things, and with the soft billing that we do, oftentimes, that part doesn't get paid, or people that don't have insurance.
And I do want to get people's budget questions answered, but I also do want to stay focused on the ARPA funds, so I'm not going to limit the questions, but no, no, go ahead, Shirley. I just.
I was just curious, if Medicare pays on the end?
Yes. Yeah, they receive bills.
Well, Kuzic, does the, does $170,000 come from the extra payment we had to do in the bond? Is that the reason why?
Yeah, so the $170,000 number was yes. So we signed our loan early to get a low interest rate. We did not draw money on the bond.
Right.
And because we did not draw money, the bank said, oh, you don't have to make a payment. But then the bond administrator at the state level said, no, you do have to make a payment. And so we made the payment, because they are the final.
Right, but won't that reduce the amount of money for next year that we have to pay? Or we pay ahead?
No, no, we're basically paying ahead, because the bond payment is the same payment every year.
We didn't make the payment last year, and then when we had a meeting with bond counsel this year, they said we couldn't have made that payment, so we had to pay a payment from last year and a payment for this year.
You know, the thing we have to focus on, though, is that the townsfolk are very focused on their taxes. So anything, you know, and I realize that you're going to save money over 30 years, but I really think, at least for the next few years, until things settle down and we see what our real revenue is going to be, we ought to really focus on reducing the taxes, even though it's probably robbing Peter to pay Paul, but it's still, I think, people would appreciate more the money coming in and reducing the amount of taxes they pay than somebody, they'll all be dead by 30 years coming, so.
I am not going to be dead.
I think Mr. Kuzic makes a very strong point. Okay, thank you.
Digger? I echo Tracy that we should spend this on a capital expense and not on ongoing salaries. And I also echo you, it is robbing Peter to pay Paul. Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to let Dan go. Dan hasn't spoken yet.
Yeah, Kylie, I'm going to just say the same thing I did yesterday last time, which is, you shouldn't be using one-time money for operations. You should be using it for capital. That was the original idea with the ARPA funds. I mean, there's a school district on the other side of the river that's running into that problem, because they use the asset funds to hire people. Well, when the asset funds were in, out, they had to fire people, so.
Shirley?
Does it reduce the length of the time of the bond?
No.
This reduces the monthly payment?
No, it doesn't.
The payment.
It reduced, actually, Shirley's right. It will reduce the time we've already taken the entire amount. The payment's not going to go down until it's completely paid off.
And we're allowed to pay early without a cap.
Yeah.
Do it.
I missed the beginning of what he said, so I might be off base here. I was just wondering if, when we take this bond money, wherever the money's coming from, it's not the town's money, it's something we're getting to pay salaries, I'm feeling that it's, that's really against our town way of doing things, and it's not good business practice. We need to focus on what it costs to run and pay police and those kinds of things, instead of taking a fund like we're getting, it's, you know, free money, and putting it into salaries. That's not, to me, it's good business at all.
I just want to clarify, I agree with both of you, and on a year-to-year, I would not ever bring that up, because it would be reducing taxes coming in to do that. In this situation, it's not doing that, it will just free up some funds that could fall into fund balance if not needed to cover the budget surplus or deficit, those types of things. So in a way, it's covering operational expenses, but in a way, it's not, because it's not reducing the tax rate, so you're not going to spike the tax rate next year because you did this.
You know, every, every year, we dip into that fund to reduce taxes, so there'll be more to dip into if this money, as you said, flows into, as I can, so it's not a question of that it won't reduce or can't be used to affect, it's just a question, like Dan said, whether, whether you're going to use it and focus on, you know, payments, or whether you're going to use it right up now to get some advantage for the people.
So my understanding is that these, the expenditure of these funds is outside of the junk, of the budget as.
Yeah, they would be used as like a grant.
Right, so this would not reduce the amount of revenue that has to be raised in taxes this year, because this is expenditures outside of the regular budget.
No, but every year, you guys dip into the undesigned, don't you?
One time, but this, this year, that happened.
Well, it's happened in the past.
I'm sure it has, but it's the first time since I've been involved.
But that's okay. You know, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying, it's nice that somebody dipped.
But I guess, but I guess what I'm saying is, is with the way these funds are administered, it will not necessarily reduce the amount that we have to raise in taxes this year.
Like.
Not for, no.
No, it won't reduce how much we raise the taxes.
Not in 2024, it will not.
Oh, 2024, okay.
It will not, because 2024 budget is already set, and these funds are outside of the budget.
Sorry.
Any other comments? Don't see any hands up online.
I guess I'll make my comments. I would like to see us spreading on a capital expense. I know that CIP is really reviewing their plan right now, but we have some concerns if we look three to five years down the road. $100,000, if we were to commit to a, one of those expenses that's planned for next year, we could sort of boost that fund by 100,000 in planning for three to five years from now. And I'll also suggest that we have a deadline for committing the funds, which is the end of the calendar year. So we could table this until November, when we would know whether the elevator was managed into the budget, we would know with greater clarity where the current budget stands, and then we can make it, so go ahead, Ed.
I just wanted to say, I, me and Eric talked this through, and I'm in support of that, if the board would like to.
To delay, he's in support of.
To delay, to see a little more clearer, closer to the end of the year.
And I will say, I'm really glad he brought this forward now, because we should be talking about these things as soon as they come up. So as soon as we had the grant, we needed to have 100,000, talking about it in this way is the productive way to reach a conclusion. But that'd be my view, I'd like to see us port it towards the CIP expense that is already planned for next year, which there are several vehicles that are on the, on the docket for next year.
So what will we be voting on?
Well.
That's your decision.
Well, we have.
Fableting it. So we're not talking about the CIP at this point?
We'll see what, we'll see, no, 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 we'll see what, what the pleasure of the board is. I'm simply giving my suggestion.
As I say, this was Eric suggesting.
Tracy had his suggestion.
So the board needs to determine what they would like.
I, I'm a little bit, to use a poor expression, I'm sorry, that's kicking the can down the roof. I believe that we should commit the $104,000 into ARPA funds to a capital expense, and if we manage it out of the construction budget, it's still in the bond. I'm looking to use the $104,000 to reduce the eventual payments on the bond. We still need to supplement the $104,000 with another $32,000 to meet the elevator contract. That can be dealt with as a CIP fund or elsewhere, but I'm looking to spend the $204,000 as a, as a, on a capital expense to save on the bond.
So are there any other comments? Go ahead.
I really don't want to play, let's fish ARPA, then let's fish CIP. I'd rather just delay and get some figures, because I want to make a solid decision with good data, and I don't feel comfortable, I know we've, it clearly, people have voiced to us that they're not comfortable with accounting, right? Most folks are very clear that they understand about zero about accounting, and the more times we do this, the more we make them nervous, and I think it's a valid feeling, right? So to say, this is our plan, this is what we have for data, and this is what we made for decision, is, I think, a lot more fair in terms of just being very transparent. You know, we're never going to get everyone a college accounting class here, but maybe helping them feel comfortable about our decision and why we need it.
Thanks.
So over time, like, like the later option, will we know more about whether we can manage that deficit created by the double payment, or like, manage it out of the budget? Will we know better?
We'll have a lot better numbers.
So we can make a more informed decision about whether it would be wise to put it this year, take care of this stuff as a double payment? I think that's information I'd like to have before I made a decision.
I have one small point as a supplemental source of funds, and please correct me, I may be absolutely wrong on this, but I believe we're authorized to use the sidewalk construction budget for the work that you've already completed this summer. The reserve fund for sidewalk construction is still there.
There's no reserve fund, it, it was approved for a loan.
Well, there is a reserve fund for sidewalk construction, and according to the number that I looked up, it has, let's see here, it has $17,246 in it, according to the last audit.
Is that one of the ones?
We can look at it, it wouldn't affect the budget at all?
I'm suggesting that it be used to go into the fund, to the budget, to relieve part of the issue that you're saying you're dealing with now.
That won't relieve that.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't it relieve part of the obligation that you're saying?
Because the sidewalk money wasn't budgeted in the budget, that was an approved loan, and then we talked to the CIP committee last time about possibly using CIP funds instead of taking out a $40,000 loan.
Have you taken out the $40,000 all along? Then we could use the $17,000 towards that.
Yeah, we might be able to, but it wouldn't affect the budget issue.
It says nothing.
It's just.
It's just moving lines for fund accounting purposes.
But we can look at using.
Are there any other comments on the use of the ARPA funds? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, deliberations of the board, what is your pleasure?
I think some solid points have been made for perhaps tabling the issue at this time and dealing with it in November.
I'm in favor of tabling until November, okay? Is everyone comfortable with that? I don't believe we need a motion to do that. No, okay.
Can I make a request?
Yes.
I'd just love to hear, like, as you do an update kind of on where, it doesn't have to be super detailed, like this, you always make very detailed budgets to kind of keep, so we keep it in our minds a little bit.
Yeah, we'll continue to update you on the budget and Whitney Hall project, and we'll move our way through. Probably beginning November, we'll have a discussion, and I would recommend that we do another public hearing when it's not to allocate.
Yeah, yeah, when the final season comes, we can do another public hearing and do it probably the second meeting in November, so there's plenty of time to do any paperwork or anything that needs to be done.
Thank you to everybody for your input. All right, that concludes the two public hearings for the evening. We will move on to approval of meds for the meeting of August 19th.
I didn't see a problem. I would move we accept them as presented.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's our approval. All right, board reports. Hey, let's start with you.
I love this. I have nothing to report, because Council of Vision will meet on Thursday at 7:00 PM right here, and you are all invited to join us.
Okay. Tracy?
Not much. The Energy Committee has distributed energy power rate cards to the Town Hall and the Energy, Enfield Village Association for welcome bags for new residents, which makes a small point, which is that if you know of anyone that moves into town, they have to opt into Community Power. It is not automatic. If they just say, put the power in my name, they're going to get either Liberty Utilities or someone else.
Can I ask you a quick question? So people who live here were defaulted into Community Power, but people who move here will not be?
Correct. Absolutely. As an example, the new meters which are being built on the building that is directly across on Main Street, they needed to be opted into Community Power.
This is like a leaflet that could be put in this little welcome pack of the EVA packs.
I think that's.
Even though they haven't done it, the construction meters can go into Community Power. You don't have to live here to enter Community Power. So the construction meters, as they come on for Whitney Hall and for the Emergency Services Building, can be put into Community Power under the contractor's name, so part of their budget, and they'll capture that rate. That's about all I have. I will note that, a quick thing, a number of people throughout the state have joined Community Power, and right now, it totals 170,000 accounts. That's a pretty substantial amount of people on Community Power.
John?
Budget Committee met last week, and we will be meeting in the future, the second and fourth Thursdays of every month at 6:30 right here. We welcome all visitors, and we had a very nice discussion, and it's going to be a really strong budget committee. And I think probably Ed will talk about some of the details of that, maybe or maybe not. There was a little discussion about, because we've had some problems with the audit report, because we have problems with our financial software, which apparently has been a genuine headache, but we have a new person and new computer program, I guess, and we're looking forward to things being more smooth in the future. The, our projects are pretty much on track in terms of both construction and financially. Whitney Hall is moving very well forward. The Emergency Services Building's a little bit behind, but expects to be on track very soon. And there was a little bit of discussion about what cost of living is these days. Boston metric is 3.5.
There we go. All right, John? Alice?
Yeah, so Heritage Commission met, and they are busy putting together, like, suggested guidelines to share with the planning board for people who are, like, going to do new construction or do renovations, there'd be, like, no enforcement, but just, like, suggested guidelines people want to learn. And so that's what they're doing. And that Heritage Commission team is very lean, so. So if anyone wants to join the Heritage Commission, now would be a great time. Um, Eva met, they are busily putting out the scarecrows, are the scarecrows out yet? I think they're starting to go out. Um, ordering supplies for downtown decoration for this holiday season. Um, and that is about it right now.
How's Eva doing with volunteers?
Eva needs volunteers as well. Eva definitely needs volunteers and board members, um. They're actually being very parsimonious in the projects that they are choosing to complete this year because we are such a small team and there are some uh, family things going on, some people, um, so we're all stretched. Um, but they are still always on the lookout for their next capital project, so that's promising, the spirit is there, we just need more people. Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you. And the uh, planning board had another good meeting, conceptual hearing around ideas for a potential subdivision on Lock Haven Road. And, and then further discussion of, of how to move forward with a full rewrite. Reacknowledgement that it won't happen this year, but to, to really get that. And making pretty good progress at this point, sort of made it through some roadblocks and are starting to get some things. Starting to get more things down on paper to, which you have to do at some point, you know, put ideas down and then opt them through. Which is happening now.
We're on Lock Haven Road.
Um, it's the property that used to have, at the end of the, at the dam end of the lake, the two hundred acre property that I believe uh, Dan actually purchased the old lodge, and then the property behind it is still owned by uh, someone else, and he's just talking about ideas at this point. Well, that doesn't have lake frontage.
I don't believe so.
Water from.
It's on the other side of the street. Stream rivers.
Oh, lake frontage, I think what was that? Any questions for anyone from from those reports?
Good question, Brenda Eastman, I'm not alone, um, my informal poll back here. Could you just quickly identify your last names around the table? I know that, that might surprise you, but there are a number of folks here who just really don't know uh, to identify each of you individually by your last name, could you do that quickly?
Yeah, no problem.
I'm Alice Kennedy.
And I'm Eric Russell.
John Clue.
Tracy Young.
I'm Kate Plumlee Stewart.
And for staff, we have our meditator.
Whitney Banker.
Ed Morris.
Yeah.
And Alisa Bonnet Linoff.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And then a little volume in some instances, maybe a little.
Feel free to move forward to it very hard.
Not so, um, not so much for a couple of other folks.
Yeah, we, we will do our best, but I, but I would encourage front row seating if that helps as well.
This room is rough.
So we will, uh, town manager, of course.
Alright, well, follow up on John real quick before I move in, um. As he stated, the audit report, um, it's delayed at this point, um, we did have some trouble with a new bookkeeper, we had some horrendous financial problems with our financial software. This last year, we're having a lot of trouble getting them to give any training, any updates, fix problems. So we have been looking at new financial software that I'll be talking with the Budget Committee about the possibility, um, as you guys probably know, financial software is not cheap. So it's something that we'll, we'll have to talk through, but I, I do think we're headed in a, it's in a right direction there, but with that, we had some issues coming out of last year and the um, auditor not I don't want to say financial problems, but some bookkeeping issues that needed some some eyes looking at it, some extra reconciliation, those types of things, we got that to them. But because of that, the audit's going to be delayed till later in the fall. It's a hundred percent our fault, not the auditor's problem, but um, so we'll see what comes from that. We definitely changed some processes, put some things in place to catch those things a little bit earlier this next year. But um, that's where we are in the audit report, it's really just a delayed audit report at this point, and we'll, we'll see what comes out of it. Um, and then as John said, the three point five percent increase in COLA was July to July Boston metric annual. So um, as what we'll be looking at is we're, we're looking at compensation, those types of things this year, we'll be looking at that, that cost metric. Um, staff report, as reported at the last meeting, we're down one groundskeeper, but we're delaying that position. Um, we are working with a past employee that used to work on our team that has given some he's had discussions with us, he wants to return and D P W would like to have him back, so we're, we're working with him right now to see if this is something that would, that would work, uh, we made an offer to him and we're just waiting to see if he comes back, so happy to see if we can fill that in October, that's when they'd like to fill it moving into the, the winter seasons. As was stated, uh, Whitney Hall Public Safety Building projects continue to go well. Um, drywall is mostly complete on the first two levels. Much of it's been taped and we're, we're really discussing paint and the painters itching to get inside and start painting, so um, as we're getting to those finishing touches, the, the building will really start looking nice soon. They did give us a date of late October, possibly early November, is when they think substantial completion might be done. We'll still have a little bit of work to do after that, so I'm still thinking move in will be December, January timeframe. Um, but things are moving fast and we're getting there pretty quickly.
The painting, I think, looks great.
Yeah, the painting's really starting to come together.
It's starting to pop.
They should be done with that in the next week or so. Um, Public Safety Building is in the process of pouring the, the slab. The Sally ports and part of the bays had been poured when I was there last week, and they were getting ready to start pouring the apparatus bay floor. So um, again, that'll go fast once the slab's poured, with it being prefab walls, it'll go up relatively quickly. If you drive by, you can see that the masons are, are laying the brick for the Sally port now, and it's starting to take shape, so. As was noted by John, slight delays with some of the under, underslab utilities, but I don't think we're very far off and we should be able to get caught up and still be on track for next May-June move-in time. Just wanted to remind everybody that the Mascoma Lakeside Park grand opening will be on October fifth at two P M. So we will be sending out some sort of invitations, some people will get invitations in the mail, most of the residents and people will get invitation through lists or Facebook, our normal means of getting information out. In your packet, you'll notice, and I just wanted to announce, um, as we're looking for volunteers for Eva and Heritage Commission, we're also looking for some volunteers to serve on the Mascoma River Local Advisory Committee. Um, this is a committee that looks over the Mascoma River, um, working with the the state and D E S to oversee that. And just to make our local voices heard, um, this committee kind of went defunct over the last few years and D E S is trying to stand it back up and get that going again, so if anybody would like to, to serve on that committee and help with the Mascoma River and things, decisions going along with that, um, it would be great to, to have someone step forward. Um, the rail trail, you may have noticed that Main Street near Lakeside Park was closed one day last week. Um, the town of Enfield was working with the state of New Hampshire and the Friends of the Northern Rail Trail to maintain a safe area while they removed and replaced the decking from the rail trail bridge. In the near future, they'll be replacing the railings with new safer railings and a different design. Um, I don't believe we're going to have to close the road for that, but if we need to to keep it safe, we'll do that and try to get notice out timely. Um, the notice for the rail trail last week was a little bit late, but we had a, we had a major computer issue.
Can I just ask a quick one on that, um, who's the state contact for when they close? And the crew that's like paving, do we know? Like when they leave stuff behind? Or say throw their trash in the?
We can get ahold of somebody, and it really depends who it is, what's left behind.
Okay.
You know, there were some signs and some of those things left, and that was Pike, the actual, how better is not?
I think it might have been Pike that was throwing the trash over into the giggly weeds too.
Yeah.
They might need to come back.
Know where.
Start at the, start at the Lutheran Church parking lot and go back up towards Lakeside Park, because they were I got multiple complaints and I wasn't, I didn't think it was the regular D O T contact.
Yeah.
The foreman was spoken to by one of the people who witnessed it, so they know, that doesn't mean they decided they were going to clean up more than.
If you want to double up that concern, of course, they still haven't been to Shid Street to clean that up yet.
I will double check on that, they were supposed to be there this week.
They were not, I was there at two thirty this afternoon.
Yeah, I didn't check the parking lot to see how it's doing. But I, it's our parking area too down there. The giggly weeds are actually on our parking.
Okay. Um, back in November, Enfield offered a letter of support to the Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission for a grant through U S D O T Thriving Communities Regional Pilot Program entitled Flood Resilience and Equitable Transportation Infrastructure. Long story short, um, the Regional Planning Commission was awarded one point two million dollars to do this work in the region in partnership with the Two Rivers Otto Quechi Regional Commission in Vermont. Um, Upper Valley Lake Sunapee Regional Planning Commission has hired a resilience coordinator, support the towns through this effort over the next three years. There are also some direct funds from U S D O T to advance identified transportation projects. Since Enfield was one of the supporting towns that helped them get this grant, we will have um, a little more access to the regional coordinator and we will get some of that money, I don't know how much, but pretty happy to look at that, um, definitely some larger culvert work, some of those things may be able to be engineered, they're not playing for construction, but they're paying for planning and, and some resilience efforts moving forward, so. We've been talking a lot about stormwater and things we needed to do, so to have a, a professional on staff that can help us get things planned out and to look for ways that we can get some funding will be a real big benefit to the town.
Is anything like the dam over the Mascoma River covered? The one that's in town, um, on Baltic? Like, would they be looking at anything like the effects of lowering that slightly down the floodplain there?
I don't think so, I think it's going to be a lot more, um, things alongside our road, road resilience and some of those areas. Um, we can definitely have that looked at a little bit when we do the, the TIF study that's coming out. That's, that pro- project's moving forward, just a little slower than I'd hoped. Um, on the planning front, the town completed a preambulate, preambulation project with um, the town of Grantham. Two people from Enfield, Bill Griffin and Rob Taylor went out and visited all five markers along the Grantham Enfield Town Line on Thursday, August twenty second. And we will soon have a report that we can share with you and file with the state. I thank them for, for doing that work. As Eric said, the planning board's working on five plus or minus zoning ordinance for this year's town warrant, and they're continuing to look at um, rewrite of the zoning in an effort to to bring it up to some more recent standards and to, to help out having opportunities. Um, we have submitted our reimbursement requests in the amount of sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents with the state. So thank them for the, the grant to, to move that, that work forward. The Land Use Department continues to work on junk char, junk cars and trash complaints, they issued two owner violation letters in the past couple of weeks, and they're working with those owners to get things cleaned up. So we'll continue working on that front, that's a never-ending battle. And then the Z B A appeal for Laramie Farms is set to be heard at the Hillsborough County Count Court, County Court on November thirteenth at ten A M.
Hillsborough?
Hillsborough. That's where it's been slated, and that's when it'll be. I don't know if you'll hear it or not, but the developer's attorney has been granted intervenor status to help with our cancel, this is, this is typical in a appeal type situation, so. And then on the D P W, state paving has been complete, shoulder gravel was added late last week and painting of the lines and crosswalks are, are underway, you'll see a lot of them are marked, they'll be done soon. And I will talk to them about Shane Street, Shed Street and some other cleanup. We're going to work on finishing sidewalks on Shaker Hill Road. The Shaker Boulevard Bridge Local Concern Session will be September tenth at six P M. at the, here at the D P W. And then the village school crosswalk had been painted and everything was in place prior to school starting.
There was.
That's very nice.
It's great. They took the kids out there and showed them what it was.
When will, are we likely to see those five uh, possible zoning? Um, well, if you want to see drafts, you can come to pretty much any planning board meeting, I think it'll be probably November before they've been massaged and everything sort of published. And there have to be at least one, I think there's two public, is it two, yeah, to dance, correct me, two public hearings for everyone.
And one more thing, I forgot, it came in late. Um, Walk with a Cop was a huge success this year, we had twenty, one hundred and twenty-five parents and students that participated.
Wow.
Um, yeah, police did a safety and unification drill with the entire staff of E V S prior to school starting. And have planned several ongoing trainings with the school regarding safety. So appreciate them getting involved and making sure the safety standards are up at E V S.
Well, a little questions for Ed? Any questions at this point from the board?
Do you need any uh, sidewalk chalk for the opening?
I think we'll leave that.
It's uh, it's B Y O C.
We will wait, leave that for the public comment session. For discussion there, alright, uh, moving on to the business of the easing. Starting with septic regulation discussion. Uh, so we've been talking about this for several months. And we had sent a draft to legal for review and edit. They've returned an edited version. Um, which Eric can toss us through, and, and just so everybody sort of knows where we are. What we're doing tonight is deciding whether or not this draft is ready to go to a public hearing, so it will not be adopted tonight. Uh, we have that public hearing before we do that, so, so that's where we are in the process is we've gone through a couple of iterations, we've sent one to legal, legal has returned their comments, and now we're determining whether or not to bring that draft to a public hearing where it would be fully discussed uh, for everybody, so. Go ahead.
Alright, the draft you have in front of you, um it's been modified, I'm going to say slightly, there are a lot of little changes throughout it, but really the overall, um draft content has not changed much, um, we added some some authority, um, different R S As that give us different authority, some's in the housing chapter, some's in the health regulation chapter. We reorganized some things and just clarified the way some things were written, but overall, it stays the same that we're asking people to pump and have their septic systems inspected at least every three years. There was a clarification, a major clarification on the sale of property, this year H B one 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 three went through which identified what needed to be done in the Shoreland Protection Area if there was a sale of property. So we really just rewrote that change into our, into our draft regulation. I think it really clarified what needs to happen with the sale of a property in the Shoreland Protection Area. The only other major change that you'll see was the violation section, as you know, we we kind of stayed clear of that until we got to the legal review portion. This is uh, a fine of up to a thousand dollars per violation with each, each day being a new violation. That is identical to how the D E S septic regulation is written. So D E S and the state legislature gave health officers and D E S the ability to assess this fine. To assess this fine for septic infractions and so that's why this is the the fine that was put in there.
Can that draft be posted up on screen so those who are in the room can see it? Um, and those on teams can also see it?
You have a copy of the drafts?
I have a copy of the draft, but not with any changes made to it.
But while Lisa's doing that, are there comments from the board on this draft?
I have a question. Um, on on that first page, our septic regulation draft is headed. Uh, one, two, three items down. General purpose and intent removed quote within two hundred and fifty feet of the reference line of public waters unquote. Can you explain that?
Oh, I'm missing.
The attorney said that that was adding a definition in there and he didn't think we should add definitions in that section. So we just changed it to to really state, and let me see if I can find that.
It's on.
In references definitions it's defined.
Yeah. And then in that section, it just talked about the DES shoreline area. So instead of defining it in that area, we moved that over.
Yeah, so there's no change from what we had in terms of your practical thing. It goes to page two where it says. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Shoreland Protection Area. Referred to in this document will be two hundred and fifty foot buffer around the various water bodies. And will be faulted and feel short protected. Excellent.
Other comments? Uh, on the exceptions column, uh, paragraph if you will.
Yeah, that's the major thing we needed to.
Oh, I I I'm not really going to talk about the whole thing, but really at uh, just something at the end of it. He, I know you'll eliminate where it says Wyndham. But I was going to suggest that we also add the words at the very end where it says, uh. Intervals not uh, intervals to exceed five years and then add without further exception. The reason I suggest that is because there are certain camps that are so rarely used. That they will go to the five years and they'll need the opportunity to go back again. There are some camps that are almost abandoned on on Maskoma. And that have not been used in. Five years. Therefore, there'll be the attempt, they need to go back again. That's all I'm suggesting.
Well, the waiver wouldn't be. The exception would be ongoing.
Well, the it says the except, in no case shall a waiver allow pumping intervals to exceed five years. I'm suggesting they may need another period past the initial five year period.
Don't think this prevents a second application that would be independent from the first.
You get five years.
Just giving it as an exception possibility.
No, I think the waiver also would be you need to pump within every five years.
Yeah.
So it's not giving them more time than that and it's not saying that they can't have that interval all the time.
And I'm not suggesting it all the time. I'm I'm suggesting that if someone goes four, five foot, they get an exception and they go five full years. And then they are faced with what option?
You get it inspected or pumped.
And I'm suggesting that they could apply for a second exception. Because they haven't used it for five full years.
But they still should get it inspected, I think. They don't have to get it pumped perhaps. The inspection will probably indicate whether they need to get pumped in. But I I really think that everything should be inspected every five years. That that that's one of our insurance policies.
Okay.
Because otherwise, what are we going to do? But uh, uh, assign people to determine how many. Years, days, months, a a property is.
So if you have a five year exception, you should have to have it re-inspected, even though you haven't used it for five years. Okay.
How are we to know?
I can understand that. I can go with that. Um, my only other comment is should the sale of property within the Enfield Protected Shoreline Paragraph include a specific reference? To the new House Bill one, 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 three.
No, because House Bill one, 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 three is RSA four eighty five, eight, thirty nine.
Actually, it's currently posted by the state. It's not there yet.
No, I know, but it's coming.
But that is the RSA.
You have asked that same question.
Yeah.
You thought it as well, because I looked at it and it's not there.
Yeah, they actually modified three different sections in RSA four eighty five, but four eighty five, eight, thirty nine is the one that applies here.
Right, they just had not apparently updated their own state website. Okay. Should we make any reference to who under the penalty clause is able to assign the penalty?
No, because that's state law. The select board doesn't have that authority.
No, I wasn't asking for the authority, believe me. I I I ju- I read it and yes, it does match the state law, but the state law also makes reference to state authority to do with.
And the health officer.
Actually, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
You found that?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I discussed it with the attorney.
Terrific. I did not find that part. Thank you.
So on the exceptions section. I believe if I'm understanding the suggestion is to remove the first paragraph and only have the second paragraph.
Yeah, these are just ideas.
Correct, that's that's what I'm, but the but at the attorney's, the attorney's suggestion was to strike that first paragraph. And to include the second paragraph.
Well, he didn't have anything to do with the second paragraph, just to be really clear. He said he didn't like the big wide open, the select board can make exceptions. Cause you know, what are the, what are the stipulations around that? So I did a little bit of research. I found that one from Wyndham that I thought was pretty good. And just wanted to have a discussion with the select board. We can go in a whole different direction if you want, but. Um, I looked through the septic regulations that DES send us from different towns that they had. This was the one that I thought was closest to what we were looking for and had some stipulations.
I agree. I think it's pretty good. Good choice.
So yeah, so I would. My only suggestion that that it is to strike that first paragraph and use the second paragraph as.
Yes, I I think that was your intention is to strike the first paragraph. Yes, I agree.
Other comments from the board before we take public comments? But um, comments from the public? So go ahead, Kate.
Sorry, um, no, I know. I didn't really raise my hand. So sorry. Um. So I just wanted to confirm you. I had a few people contact me and had some conversations with concerns about, um. This is not my feelings. I'm sharing someone else's feelings uh, about. They felt like this was not fair to them because there wasn't a problem on their water body yet. And we had the conversation that this is, you know. Preventative. It's the idea is to be preventative, not punitive, but um, they felt that because there wasn't a problem, we were looking for a problem. And I said I would bring that forward and so it's skeptical fund. Um, they have not had a sign of bacteria issue, but that does not mean. And they feel they know their neighbors. I I feel differently because then I promptly heard that they had a new neighbor and. There were some issues and I was like, you know what? That's what this is for. So I said I would bring it forward. Um, you know, it's very hard to. To live for exceptions. Um, and and we did have a discussion on that, being fair. So I said I would bring it forward to you guys. Um, I mentioned to add, you know. And I will say this not to complicate things, but do you put it in so that if you have some kind of bacterial load, it's. You follow to these. If you haven't, you don't. But I think it's overall, my personal view is. That it's better to just protect everything and do it all in the same group. I said I would bring it forward and so I've done so.
Um, comments from the public? Yes.
Hi, I'm Betty Placna, and I live on Crystal Lake. I was just wondering. Because it could present such difficulty for so many people financially. Um, if they have to redo their septic system or whatever. I have two issues that I'd like to know what happens. So you're going to have all these people in the next three years around every lake in Enfield. Have to engage a septic company to come out and pump. I already found when this wasn't the law, that that was a very big lead time that I needed to have in order to get a septic guy to come and pump. So what happens, this one second, what happens when you've asked somebody to come, the weather's terrible, you're facing a deadline. But the guy can't come. That's one question I have. The second question I have is. What's happening with the money that is collected from people? Can it go into a fund to help other people be able to support the. The improvements they might need. This is, I know we talked about the fact that there might be some help somewhere down along the line for some people. If they, you know, were to whatever.
Yeah, that's interesting suggestion.
I would like to know what happens with those fine money.
Yeah, so I think I'll let it go in more detail, but the first one is the town works with people regularly around deadlines. Especially if they're demonstrating they're behaving in good faith and they're doing the things they're supposed to be doing, but. Uh, the town works with folks in those situations.
I would say more than likely there are going to be little to no fines. Most of the time we can work with people to move forward. It's not just going to be, oh, your system failed. Here's a fine. It's, it's really. I mean, the whole premise behind it is to work with people to get the system working properly.
And I'm saying like your system might be working properly, but you can't get the person in to even pump within the timeframe.
We'll work with you. I mean, I had mine done and it didn't.
The the ordinance allows one full year after it becomes an ordinance. So if we adopt it later this fall, you have one full year to arrange for the inspection.
So you're saying everybody around the lake.
Has one.
One year.
Has one.
If they've had their septic pumped. Year before.
No.
You can show that.
No, if you show that, then you don't need to do anything. But for people that don't have any evidence of a prior inspection or pumping, they have one full year after the ordinance takes effect.
But just to clarify, don't you, don't you mean to say, and and correct me, don't you mean to say? That. They, that they need to show not only pumping within the past year, but also the inspection. So when you replied to Elizabeth here. That, um, if she's had pumping in the past year, she can show that. But it, but it's, isn't it a requirement for pumping and the inspection both together?
It it is, but there is now a nice exception rule that has been drafted. So that it it has been inspected, it can relieve the pumping to a certain extent.
Tracy, I'm gonna let Ed, I'm gonna let Ed answer this question.
All right.
Can we get a name for the minute ticker, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Be more common.
Could you say your name again for the minute?
Brenda Eastman.
Yes, thank you, Brenda.
Yeah.
Ed, go ahead.
Yeah, you'll need to work on an inspection if you. You know, we'll work with people if we have them scheduled and those types of things. Again, we're not out to try to find people. We want. Septic systems to work. But you know, we set or someone set one up around Crystal Lake this year and. Little to no time. So I think a year would be plenty of time for people to be able to get an inspection done.
Your name for addition, Crystal Lake Road. I want to know what the inspection entails. What are you inspecting?
That's determined by a industry professional who would, you know, how is it? So we're not determining what an inspection is, however, we're relying on an industry professional to write a report. And make a determination. Um, and licensed septic system evaluators, this is their profession. It's what they do.
It's not somebody who pumps. That's got to be somebody else.
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually the same person holds both certifications, but the person doing the inspection would have to be a New Hampshire licensed septic system evaluator.
Um, fair.
Yeah.
So, uh, Tom Ploss, who's happened to live on Crystal Lake and is on conservation with us, uh, very kindly shared with conservation. Last time we met that they had found someone, um, who was able to do it for under three hundred dollars, because originally the amount was cited to be much, much more, um. And I can tell you from having a subject system myself, I call and someone pumps it within two days. So I'm not saying you can necessarily schedule an inspection, but I think you can expect a reasonable amount of time and a reasonable qualification, um. You know, you can look all the licensed people up on the state of New Hampshire. Everyone who's licensed in the state of New Hampshire is registered right online.
Well, my question is if you have, uh, you're, you're saying two hundred and fifty feet. Does that mean your septic has to be outside of that two hundred and fifty feet? Um, I am right on the lake. I I have my septic pumped. Probably every other year at least. I don't have any room to put in a new system. So if somebody comes in and says it's failed. What recourse am I going to have?
Well, on the other hand, do you want to live with a failed septic system living on a lake?
Don't want to destroy the lake, but none of you are the health officer here.
Your, your system can be within the two hundred and fifty feet of the high watermark of the water body. That is allowed. We're simply asking for an inspection and potential pumping of your system. It has nothing to do with potentially locating your system outside the two hundred and fifty foot test point.
Right, there, there's no limit within this regulation where people could locate septics. The septics have to be inspected and pumped.
The inspection has to be with a camera. Is that correct?
They don't take a care.
It has, it has to be done by a licensed septic system evaluator.
Because the last time they tried to have a camera put down mine, they said my system could not have a camera put down. And they dug into it and said it was fine. So I don't understand.
So if if, if they were a licensed system evaluator, they would write you a report saying it's fine and you'd be fine.
I do want to just say, well, we're not the health officer. The state of New Hampshire decided during COVID. To make your select board the board of health and that's why you're sitting here with us. So these are your, this is your board of health and we work with the health officer in town.
I I'm going to just try to give everybody a chance to speak once, then I'll get back to you. Sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
I, uh, Dan Regan, uh, Mr. Moore, first of all, I think on page two, you might have a typo, the very last. Line or page two, I think, where it says has not, had not, should not be there. So if you have had your septic inspected or pumped within the past year, you don't have to do it again. The second thing I have is I get a little bit concerned with the exceptions. I get it. But I just want to walk through a couple of things so we can all kind of think through this and hit. So year one, I'm going to have to inspect and pump. I want to go for an exception so I don't have to pump again three years later. So in year four, I have to do another inspection to see if I have to pump her.
Or by the end of year five, it says you'll have a five year exemption.
No, but I'm sorry, I had to inspect in year four anyways, because I inspected year one and I have to inspect every three years. The exception does not tie with inspections, all about pumping. So I've inspected year one, pumped year one, year four I've inspected. Now I have to pump again in year six because I got the exception. So I pumped year one and now year six. So then I have to inspect again in year seven. Then I have to inspect in year nine, inspect in year ten, pump in year eleven. We're actually adding, if you think through it, we're adding the amount of times I have to have either an inspector or a pumper come. With an exception.
He, he, he's correct. They should be together. It should be, it should be pumping and and inspection.
So you're suggesting we can do an exception, so not every three years, but inspect every five?
I'm sorry, if you're going to have an exception, it should be. To to both of those in the same frequency of time, because it, because I. What you're pointing out is it doesn't make sense to have them not tied together. The inspection and the pumping would be tied together.
So if that's the case, let me just suggest to you that every piece of literature that you read suggests you should inspect every year. And pump every two or three years. So this would be well outside of any published literature to have an exception in that regard. So I think we need to think about that very carefully.
Okay, actually, I've not experienced documents that require inspection every year. It's more commonly a little further than that.
No, I have one here, Mr. Tracy, I could share with you. It's from the DES. And it calls for inspecting every year and pumping every two or three years. Uh, I'd be more than happy.
No, it's fine. I've read it.
Surely.
It doesn't, it isn't that clear on every year.
It'd be necessary for a person to initially have an inspection before they apply for an exception? I mean, you need to know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, no, I would, I I. So the overall process, right, that's an administrative way of implementing it. And that has not, because this has not been adopted, the the exact implementation methods have not been gone through. Because it may be that somebody doesn't use, as Tracy's mentioned, never uses their property. They'll verify they don't. I I I'm simply saying, if that were the case. And somebody were saying, we're truly never using this and they were able to prove to that, that would be an exceptional case. and somebody were saying, we're truly never using this, and they were able to prove to that, that would be an exceptional case. I'm not aware of any of those, but that is a truly exceptional case that would warrant consideration um by the board of health.
It could be tree roots and all kinds of stuff.
Right, but if they're truly never using it, that's a truly exceptional case.
I mean, I'm just.
Yeah.
I'm aware of a couple of camps on Meskoma that haven't been used in ten years.
Yeah.
So I hadn't quite finished.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Keep going. So I'm holding my hand right now, DES document SSB dash one three. And I will review from that document. It's under the title of what you can do properly to properly maintain your septic system. It says, and I quote, first and foremost, inspect your septic tank every year. I don't know how they can get it clear with that.
That didn't say must, it said can.
There's no can.
You read the word can.
Oh, in the title. All right. So let me let me pull out another document. So this is something that the governor in two thousand and two said, I want to put together uh HB one zero six six. He said, we have a problem with cyanobacteria. This is two thousand and two. This this is before the outbreak in Enfield in two thousand and twenty-three and a lot of the other outbreaks. So he said, we have a problem, and I want to spend thirty thousand dollars and put together a a study on cyanobacteria. And he put together a advisory committee of seventeen people that included people from University of New Hampshire, DES, uh as well as um New Hampshire Lakes, Lake Associations, drinking water suppliers, et cetera, et cetera. These were the experts we could find in the state. And what he found was there was four things that we should do. And the first four strategies, the first was develop policies and practices to reduce, control, and prevent nutrient inputs that cause cyanobacterial bulms. So then he said within that, within the report, a properly functioning septic system is important and can remove in excess of ninety percent of the phosphorus from household wastewater. However, septic systems that are properly installed, maintained, or old septic systems may not function effectively, thereby allowing a higher nutrient load to reach surface waters. So this report goes on to suggest several things, uh including um that towns consider RSAs and rules require formal septic system inspections and report and reporting to N A uh NHDES and local municipal municipal. He also calls for, he doesn't, but the report calls for the replacement of systems in failure at the time of the sale of property, which we've seen now through uh the most recent um law that is going to affect. So I guess I'm saying I've done a lot of research. And this report is done APA seven formatting, so it's cited throughout the report. And then it has references at the back of the report. All of these documents suggest that five years is too long, whether a system is being used or not used. Initially, he said, we have root growth that can disturb systems. So that can happen much sooner than five years. If that happens, we're then getting these nutrients into the water. If we're going to go forward with this, let's do it right. All right, the exception should be the vast exception. We can't change the whole spirit of this for for the extreme case.
Yeah, and this exception, if you read it, is number two was that a septic system evaluator recommends pumping on a longer time scale than the three years, not to exceed five. And I do know there's been some people in town that have had their places inspected and the inspector recommended four-year pumping or something like that. So that's really when the inspector come forward and says it doesn't need to be pumped every three years, that you can make that exception, but.
I think we have some comments online. Um, like to go those uh. So it's hard for me to see the screen from here. David.
David.
Uh, can you unmute yourself and make a comment, please?
Hello, um, my name is David Kellman. I live on Meskoma Lake. A week ago, I contacted two septic inspectors. One of them has not gotten back to me. The other one did. And I think it's important for people to understand, you want to have your septic inspection done before your tank is pumped. He said that he needs to see the septic system in operation. So if you end up, as I, I have a septic uh appointment for a septic tank pumping. And he said, well, then I shouldn't be coming right after you pump. So this is just an informative thing. Second thing is the previous gentleman was talking about having a septic inspection every year. But when I heard what he was reading, it said your septic tank should be inspected yearly. Now, that could mean that the filter needs to be, you need to open up the tank and wash out the filter once a year. Um, it doesn't mean that the entire system has to be inspected, including the whole leach field. That is my comment, and I, once again, I don't have uh the policy up on my screen, so I can't say. But it seemed to me that it was unclear. Um, I think it said you need to have your system pumped and inspected every three years. And I would have them in reverse order. Have your system inspected and then pumped if necessary every three years. Something like that, because um that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. That's good information. Okay, um, I know there's some folks who have their hands up for a second round.
So this is my first question because the last comment was clarification of this gentleman's statement. Um, so just a a couple of comments. One, two, to just step back just a second, and I know we're far beyond this point, but in when when the whole uh notion of introducing the septic rule um was presented, uh the reference was the Sonape, the town of Sonape Rule or Ordinance as a as a model with Sonape uh with the lake being the source of drinking water for the town. But isn't it the case, I recently read the Sonape Rule, and perhaps I missed the entirety of it. But what I read spoke of regular pumping in for Sonape, but not but not the hard rule on uh inspections. Am I, am I wrong? What? I'm just curious.
No, I I I believe you're correct that Sonape's rule is around pumping. And as we have developed through the last few months, including, there was a large meeting uh run by the planning board, actually, with folks in the lakes. Uh, the inspection was evaluated and added in as an important tool to make sure we're we're moving in in the direction. But that is a difference between this draft and what Sonape has.
And Sonape, so okay, thank you for clarifying that. So it is, it is true to say that uh this board Enfield has taken a pretty drastic leap in terms of um a more restrictive plan.
I I think I think how its view will will differ from different people, but it but it is a unique to Enfield ordinance.
Yes.
Designed to try to address.
I think it relieves Enfield residents from the automatic must be pumped and allows an exception where inspections may enter into the thinking process.
Yeah, pumping seems simple. Just the second part of my comment, just very uh quickly. So in talking with um a friend, a neighbor, I I live on Crystal Lake. Uh, who is taking the initiative to uh sort of get ahead of the process and get a new septic system and describe what a lengthy process it is. Explains that first you must find a septic designer. Um, and 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 so 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 I I'm I'm just wanting to mention that I do think there is going to be a hot supply-demand issue potentially when when the rule goes into effect as um Elizabeth Plickto mentioned earlier. And there is a, it's one thing to describe individually making a call to have your septic system pumped or inspected and having great luck having somebody come by. But uh just a comment, I don't know, what is the question, I guess? Um, from that is what's the timeframe? You've spoken of the timeframe for inspection and pumping after the rule uh is in effect. But what's after that, how much time is granted for the individual to have the new septic system in place and approved by an inspector?
There's no timeframe in here. Um, first off, I would say the majority of people, a large majority, are not going to need a new septic system. You're not going to see a flood of new septic systems needing to go in. You know. If it is, then this rule is a lot more important than we think it is.
No, no, let me please be a comment on that because I think the impression people have is that uh many of them may have very adequately functioning septic systems, but which will not meet the state-of-the-art twenty twenty-four standard according to New Hampshire Lakes Approved Inspectors. I think that's what's on the minds.
They don't need to.
Many homeowners.
They don't need to. They just need to be functioning properly. They can be old septic systems, as long as they're functioning properly and they're not polluting the lake, they're fine.
It it does seem, though, that that what adding the inspection process does create another complexity. And so I I I can understand why people are are concerned, right? To to try to put in a new septic system, state-of-the-art system near a lake is is probably not a, not a, not an easy task, right? Not done. Um, I've, I think, though, the bottom line, as I always thought, was if you have that lake property and you're within two hundred and fifty feet and your system is within two hundred and fifty feet of the lake, you have to pump it every three years, period. I'm old fashioned, as you've noticed.
As you see, a couple of new hands. Let me give them a chance first, and then I'll get.
I'm Glenn Green, Shirley Sutherland. Um, I just want, I keep hearing, well, you know, I have to have an excuse for you. The the reality, we had some folks come over and talk to us about the septic system we have. And most people heard that our annual meeting, we have a point two four acre lot. We put in a system some years ago. It's required that we have it inspected every other year and pumped the off years. It's a great system. We love it. We had these people come over and look at it. They said, well, we're going to call this guy. And the company that makes the system is Advanced On-Site Solutions. They have a number of systems on Crystal Lake. The comment that we got back from them a couple of days later is, we called him, he's been up, looked at it. Now we have to decide whether we want it done this fall or in the spring. That doesn't sound like a difficult. Let's let's go to these people and find out if it's difficult. I agree that eighty-five percent of the septic systems in the town Enfield probably don't have a problem. An inspection will prove that it worked fine. It's wonderful. Pump it regularly. But I guess it's it's too early to be fighting this thing. It's too early. I think the the folks from the town Enfield have done a heck of a job of putting this together and bringing the people here. And I personally appreciate it.
Thank you. Brad?
Yeah, uh Brad Rich. Uh, I also live on Crystal. Just for edification, my system is forty years old. It was inspected last year. It's fine. So old systems can pass. But the to to John's point, if you just have the septic system pumped, you could still have a bad system because the leach field is failing. So, you know, it takes, depending on how many people in the house, it doesn't take that long for a septic tank to fill up. And but if your your leach field is failing, that is what's getting into the water. So the inspection is going to say, okay, your leach field's okay and your septic tank, but it's the leach field. It's the key.
All right.
So I just wanted to say now two things because I very much appreciated what the gentleman online said. I believe his name was Dave. Because he brought about a completely different like paradigm from my head that, oh, you have to have it inspected before you have it pumped. I think it was going off as you have to have it inspected and pumped, meaning the same guy does the same job the minute he's there. And it, and that's fine. So it sounds like, okay, so I had my my septic uh pumped last year when I moved here. And the guy who's approved by New Hampshire, Barry Claus, came and he said, you got five years on this. Now, what does it mean? I just want to know, what does it mean to have it inspected? Is it a completely different thing, or is it that he said, oh, my God, you're one person living here. You have a fifteen thousand, a hundred gallon tank. You are not filling this up in the next five years. You're good to go. Is it a thumbs up? Is it a, I've run a camera through every orifice in your house? Is it in under your, you know, your driveway that's been there for forty years? I'd like to know what it means because otherwise I don't think that the entire board, until that gentleman Dave spoke, really understood what the what the process is. And that's concerning for me.
So so this is not regulating how inspectors do their job. That is not what this does. If the gentleman who did yours is a New Hampshire licensed septic system evaluator.
Yes.
He could write you the letter that you need saying that your system passes.
Passes and is booked for five years or just passes and?
Passes, and then if if you felt you wanted the way this is drafted, you could apply for an exception.
Okay.
How to publish. That's how it would work. But we're not going to determine how they do their job, that they are licensed professionals. And we're not regulating.
This whole thing. I just want to say that like there's a complete paradigm shift for me.
Yeah.
Understanding it because I thought it was going to be a major, you know, I'm sending a kid through the miles or something, you know.
But you know, how how inspections happen will be determined by the licensed professionals. And they have professional standards that they have to live up to. And, you know, they're not going to put their their livelihood at risk.
Right.
You know, they're going to do it, and we're going to rely on their professionalism um for those reports.
Well, accusing, um, first of all, I, when I saw this, I looked up uh five different town regulations and some were a little bit less, but three of them were more draconian than this regulation. So this regulation isn't out of the realm. I know people talked about Sonape. This this regulation is more specific. The more specific you get and the more exceptions that you allow, it's going to require a greater, shall we say, accounting on the part of the people in the town. So I I hope, number one, we do get some kind of, there's people that are putting out computer systems to track these things. And I I bring up a delicate thing where I think the people around the lake should maybe be assessed a few bucks. Not anything, just a few dollars to take care of the cost that the town's going to have in monitoring um the lake. And I just, you know, I put that out there because it is going to cost money and it is going to require quite a bit of input on the part of town officials.
I I appreciate your comment. I will say, though, as as somebody who does not live on the lakes, I still benefit greatly from the lakes in town. And it's very appropriate.
And you should for so too.
For all of us to participate in the administrative cost of of this program, so.
And we look for a system, though, that the line of things, so it isn't, you know, a lot of.
Yes, there there have been discussions around implementation methods. But, you know, we're not going to get ahead of ourselves in terms of, well, thanks for the question.
I just wanted to clarify something. When someone comes and pumps your tank, they can't make a determination then on how long you can go without an official inspection.
Correct. And and I will say, just just for for folks, the way that the way the exception is written, uh the board of health or their designee may grant a waiver allowing less frequent pumping after review of either a valid septic system operational approval uh on file with the New Hampshire DES or a current written system evaluation signed by a New Hampshire certified or licensed septic system evaluator. So exceptions would require a recommendation from somebody prior to being granted. That that is written as it is. So I again, I I think I'm probably annoying my fellow board members because I do like to get all the input you can. But I think we're we are at a pretty good point to decide whether or not this draft is ready for a public hearing. But I think we're we are at a pretty good point to decide whether or not this draft is ready for a public hearing.
I don't think I can vote on this draft till I see the final copy.
Okay.
This to me does not fit together totally. It probably will when I see the whole thing, but this is not the whole thing.
What what do you think is missing?
Well, what do we see here, there are bits and pieces.
We have a four page draft. Of the full proposed.
So the exception section needs to be cleaned up.
Right.
And delete one paragraph and include the other.
And there's a typo that Dan pointed out at the bottom of page two.
And in terms of clarifying, so people understand the order of operations, we said that we would say inspect and then pump. So that if people are very black and white like me, they. No, I think it is, no, I'm saying I'm very black and white, so I. It's a great suggestion to make it more operable, I love it. So that's a really easy fix. Um, yeah, and for the black and white land, I mean, I know it has to be functioning, but if I didn't, I would have totally gone in the wrong direction. I'd like to see also, just as a, it can't go in this, but when we post it. If we have a way to do an appendix that has like or something that has like a link to licensed evaluators, you know what I mean, a link to the state. Can't be part of this, but in our website, just so that people have a few resources that you can say, hey, is my Joe Schmo? Pump guy allowed to do the inspection? And he's like, yeah, I am, you're like, dude, you're not on the list. Mr. Cloud is on the list, not saying he's not, but yeah, that just a few little like helpful dibs and dabs.
And and for many, for many things like that, the town has lists of professionals in the area. They don't make recommendations, but they do provide more contact.
I mean, the state has a full list, though, it's great.
And there is quite a difference in costs.
Yeah.
Ours is two thirty five.
I see one final comment, I think Martha Rich. Oh, there's two up there, so Martha, Martha, go ahead, if you want to yourself.
Uh-oh, you're on mute. There we go.
You're still muted.
Okay, all right, I'm not used to buttons on teams, here we go, you can hear me now, right? I'm Martha Rich, I'm on Meskoma Lake and I want to endorse. The suggestion that I think was maybe Brenda made a while back about thinking about setting up a fund, I think, to get. People on the lakes to see this as a good thing, at least a suggestion. And I'm not even saying this should be part of these rules, but to to say that there's some support for setting up. Maybe even some kind of revolving fund that would help people for whom it would be a financial hardship. To comply with these regulations. I I just think that's. A great idea and I'd like to see that move forward. I'd like to be able to rally people to that possibility if if you think it's reasonable. I also really want to endorse Kate's suggestion, I think having definitions for people. It wasn't until I really started looking at these rules that I began to understand the difference between a pump out and an inspection. And when I started organizing an inspection, I discovered that not everybody who pumps inspects and vice versa. And maybe other people would benefit from some definitions or explanations. So the appendix that sort of defines those terms, I don't think those need to be in the rules themselves. But Kate's idea that we help people understand this better. You know, and and that could be part of the public hearing too, it seems to me, to get some. Some explanation so that people aren't as confused as some of us have been. Thanks.
Okay, and Nancy Smith, see your hand up.
Hi, I don't know how to use, oh, is the picture, it doesn't matter. I I know we've been talking about lakes, but there are hundreds of us with septic systems, old and new, that are not directly on the lake. And I assume that this this regulation is going to apply to us. And how are you gonna manage it? Are we gonna have to come in every couple of years and get a permit? Or or report it?
So quick clarification, Anthony, so this ordinance would apply within the New Hampshire D E S shoreline protection area. Which is defined as being within two hundred and fifty feet of one of the lakes. So would you apply to people outside of that two hundred and fifty foot shoreline protection area?
Okay, I thought it was just townwide, so thank you.
So within this report that I referenced earlier from the governor's office. They do suggest that the state explores a funding source that would assist property owners. But this has to go through legislation. So I have talked to David Freck about this, he said he would explore it and possibly co-sponsor that legislation.
Thank you.
But that's down the road.
All right, so bringing us back to, are we ready for a public hearing? John, is there something you think is missing from these four pages?
No, I I I think with the suggestions that have been made.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Okay. I think I think we're ready. Okay, so I don't think we need any action on us tonight, we just need to schedule that public hearing. So we will do that and you'll clean up the draft, maybe clean it up, send it out.
We'll clean it up, send it out, we'll post it on the website, we'll make it very public like we said we would after that. It will keep track on it, but it's truly the final one going to public hearing.
And and can you just take a quick, I know it's not part of the ordinance, but I think the suggestion of creating a fund of some sort with the fines is is worth having.
Some information.
Some information on.
I wrote myself a note that says revolving fund question mark because I think it's an interesting.
No, it's a very interesting idea and but I don't know the legality of it, I don't know the practicality of it. It's a very intriguing idea.
We can definitely look into that, but I think if we're gonna set up a revolving fund, we should look at another way to fund it as well. Because you're gonna get very, very little money.
That's certainly the hope.
If we even think about using tax dollars for that, it's gonna be a revolution. Don't do it.
I think if we have somebody who truly is poor, not I don't want to pay, not I don't feel like paying. For someone who's truly poor, we have a mechanism for dealing with that and we already have funds budgeted.
Well, and as we stated, there's multiple grants from the federal and state governments to help those people.
Okay, David, you have your hand up again?
Hi. My house is within the two hundred and fifty feet. But my leach field is outside of the two hundred and fifty feet. So I'm wondering whether, I don't know how it's written once again, is it where the residence is? Is it where the leach field is? Is it where the septic tank is?
So so the answer is any part of the septic system. So if your tank and leach field are outside of it, you would not have to. If any part of your tank or septic system is inside the two hundred and fifty, you would have it applied.
Yep.
That's a very good question.
Just really a final comment, as a thank you, I mean, to thank you very much for this really good quality conversation tonight. But just a quick comment, you know, with a public hearing coming up for this, and you may all be well aware of this. But the folks on the lakes with lakefront, many of them, I think, are feeling hit with a double whammy. You know, the reassessment, which of properties which move value up a hundred eighty percent. You know, the median or more in some cases, for mine, two hundred forty percent. And we know tax rates are not yet, we you know. We don't know, maybe you, we we don't know yet what the impact is gonna be on the taxes. But but just to for you all to be aware that there probably are some tender underbellies, you know, about now for lakefront folks. Getting this rule and the the reassessment, which was really sort of a sudden rapid upward move to. And and I saw, and and so a neutral observer could say, well, let them sell, you know, their places are worse than they can. You know, self, they can't afford their septic system, let them sell it to, you know, somebody and and make a lot of money and. Go live somewhere else, but a lot of these people are not wealthy people, you know, they're people who played on the the big older rock in nineteen sixty nine. With their, you know, with their cousins and their friends who still live around the lake, who are not wealthy people. So just 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 a reminder to to you all, that that's what's happening.
Okay, thank you. All right, is it new?
Yeah, it's a really interesting thought that I had. And that's one of the things that we on the lake have so many strictures around what we can and cannot do. And the concept came up about, oh, what about all the, you know, tree roots? Well, we can't move a tree. And so we are really stuck between a rock and a hard place with the the state telling us what we can't do. And, you know, trust me, I'm gonna do this, it's like not that, but I just want everybody to understand. It's very difficult if you can't move a tree, if you can't take it down because you're within that shoreline protection thing. And then you've got all these tree roots that are that are, you know, banging down on your leach field potentially every minute, whatever. But it is a really difficult thing, I just want you to understand that it's really between a rock and a hard place what we can do. And it feels so odd that then the state will not even extend their wakeboard wave thing out five hundred feet. And they're ruining our shores. And so my property is getting smaller by the minute because I don't have a, you know, a a rock wall out in the water. Because you can't do that and I don't have a concrete wall in the water because I can't do that. And so it's like it is a really weird place to be in for those of us that have lakefront property. That the state requires certain things that we can and cannot do. And then they're allowing such detrimental things to happen, like giant waves hitting our shore.
Thank you. All right, I think we're we are ready to move on to the next agenda item. Which is a budget saving discussion continued from last meeting because at least we was unable to attend last time, so. All right. Go ahead. Well, you don't have to.
Well, there is the calendar.
Excuse me, I I am gonna ask side conversations to be taken out into the other room so that we can continue with our business evening, thank you.
So I understand you did make a decision on the calendar because I wasn't here. That puts the process behind, it's gotten to be very difficult to get it done. It's, I honestly don't recommend it, I'll just be upfront about it. It is out of date almost before it's printed because something changes. Things are constantly changing, which is why we post things on our website, that's easy to fix on the fly, once the calendar's done, it's done. And it costs a fair amount of money to print. And I think that if somebody needs a printed calendar, we have free ones that come in the office, they can fix a big one up. And at this point, I don't know that I have the time, C I P and budget take up more time because they want more data. And this is all this same time here.
Yeah, so so this is requesting that we remove, that we do not do the calendar for twenty twenty five. Because of the cost of printing, scheduling and largely the cost of town staff time. And on the practical level, there's enough changes in meeting dates and such between now and when they actually happen a year from now. But it may not be the most accurate at that point, so. Yeah, there, John.
How how is it posted on on the town website? I I don't use it, so. Because I use a paper calendar.
If you go to minutes and agendas, all the meetings are posted, I can read that.
Does it look like a calendar?
Yes.
It does, is it printable?
I don't know that it is printable.
That was the point I had made last time.
You can print it, but you're only gonna get partial data.
If it were printable, that would be perfect.
It would be great.
You know, I see a lot of discussion all year long that is that that photo should go in the town calendar. I'm not saying that's the reason we should do it, I'm saying that is maybe an opportunity to say that photo should go on the town website.
Yes, I would agree with that.
I mean, that might be a way for some very big, because I think those people will get really excited about.
Well, we talked about that, we could still run a photo contest. You could also take photos throughout the year, but we could run a photo contest at another time of year that's not why it is busy.
We could tie that in with all home days.
It was showing, maybe, there's a great.
The public votes instead of this town staff.
Guys, I really love the calendar, I hate most things with paper, I'm just gonna say it.
And I appreciate how hard it is. It is beautiful and I I do recognize that it's a feel-good data.
But I didn't get one here and I this year and I had to put down. But I think I appreciate your hard work and I respect that it's a lot.
It is a lot.
Yeah, on my desk, I have my laptop, my iPad, my iPhone and a paper calendar. Split personality, I can live without it.
Yeah, I think if it's.
If if there were a way to make it printable, I'd be a happy guy.
You can find the the meetings, but you can't see where it's held unless you go to view details.
Can you switch views to?
Go to.
There's a calendar view.
That, yeah, there's a full month.
There is, it doesn't help as. You can go to view full calendar, this shows you everything that's happening, it still doesn't say where.
So that's okay.
I I don't think the where is crucial because we're gonna move anyway.
And if you click on it, you can see that.
Yeah.
Yes. If we can print. Out several months.
Yeah.
Should we bookmark it on your computer?
I will highlight, Elisa did go through as well and put herb side trash and recycling this week.
Saw that.
So you can see that on the weeks that herb side recycling happens.
So what's really hard with this new website is that there's no feed for a specific border committee. So you have to individually click on it, which is a problem, like in terms of efficiency. So I mean, can we go to what companies do where if you're on the border committee, you have an invite with all of your stuff? Like most companies, if you're on X Y Z committee, everybody's on the invite, it's your calendar, you're done. And if there's somebody who you're expecting to show up, like before you used to only click on the select board feed and hold all of the select board feed in. Somebody made a modification, I made a hot mess.
These are all great suggestions. For the sake of time this evening, are we comfortable with not having the paper calendar? And staff will work to improve the online calendar?
I'm comfortable with it conditioned on the ability to print out in calendar format as we see it.
I don't know if I can guarantee that.
But we'll see, that's not when we control the with our website, we can make that happen.
It's a lot of meat.
Yeah. Is there any comment, go ahead, David?
I think we're dealing with a generational issue that demonstrated even on this board. And certainly with me, I have had great difficulties, so Elisa can attest recently in 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 parts of the of the website. It is not easy to use and if you have even less computer tech savvy than I am, which is not uncommon. I'm somewhere in the low middle, probably, certainly not compared to some of the younger people in this room. Anything that's that's vaguely functioning without help. I think it needs an orientation for people, some of whom may not even have a computer. About how do you get get that? I don't know why, how to address that, I understand the problems with staff time and cost, but it's it is an issue. It could also become less less expensive if you have all the pictures and I submit pictures.
The the problem with the meetings is they change locations. The, the problem with the meetings is they change location, they change time, they change day. All of these things with the calendar, really, while it looks nice and you think you know what's going on, you don't really.
Paper copy of September twenty twenty four that's available, um, or next two or three months. Available to people that aren't accessing it by computer, that's something, you know, and I wouldn't mail it, that's expensive.
We do have a, a paper posting at the town offices.
But that they can hand out and take with them?
No.
We can make a photocopy for.
But it's a good point and we could, we could look into having some copies at town hall or just the ability to print one quickly for folks if they request it.
The second you make copies, they go out of date too, because.
Well, that's true, but I'm updating it sometimes twice a week.
Printable, then it's very quick, just go and print that day as best as we.
The other option is if people just sign up. I know they have to go online and do this. Or, uh, notices about certain things, so you want select board meeting notices. When I post an agenda, I send out a notice that says it's been done and the links are all right there.
Nancy, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm old, I like paper and I think that that calendar has an awful lot to do with community, not meeting times. It, it, it's something that you get from the town that's useful, you know, it hangs on the wall and. It's good.
I think all of us love. I don't know how, I don't know how to find the time. To do it.
I think that's the issue.
That I just asked the question, a lot of these. That sells these kind of products. Is that something we should have looked at, like, should we be saying, like, there are companies that, like. Make a sports X Y Z calendar and you throw them all the stuff and you throw them your list from Eva and. They, they go through the businesses and they're like, lots you, you purchased an ad, would you like to pay us fifty bucks? And they do it for you. Is there somebody we could be contracting this out to?
We can possibly look at that.
Be revenue neutral?
It's gonna cost the taxpayers quite a bit.
Saw it, there's like a public outcry.
I think you have to charge enough for advertising and if you're doing it, like these calendars they get for sports things and stuff, they charge. Good money. And people like having them depending on their.
So what, what is the, uh, the pleasure of the board? Do we? Are we comfortable with taking a year off?
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but conditioned on our ability to print it.
And yet, but we don't have to say like Spanish crap or we'll take a year off and we'll see if like.
There's not how much I hate paper and this is the only thing I like.
And I will say, Tracy, if we decide tonight not to do it because of staff time, it will not happen regardless of. You know, the short term ability to print that calendar in a particular way, like this is a decision, yes or no. We can't be conditional about it because of staff time needed to put it together.
No, I wasn't saying that. No, no, not, I'm sorry, you misunderstood what I said, print. I mean, print off of the screen.
No, but what I'm saying is we can't put conditions on whether or not it happens because the decision tonight is going to either do it or not. We can't come back in two months and say, oh, we didn't get figure out the printing, now we want a paper calendar, that ship will sail.
I think tonight's.
I understand that.
You hit the point you're making, is I understand print screen, which I only learned about about six months ago.
That's correct.
Can't you do a print screen and print that off?
Correct.
Of, of, of its current level?
Or a screen.
It is printable. It's just a question of what route you have.
You can only do the car.
And a little bit on the device. Uh, but it is printable, but it may, it may take a little education.
I'll be optimistic that our webmaster or software provider can provide that to us.
And, and your device certainly can print it. Your device certainly can print it regardless of what the browser itself is doing.
Remember, I pulled it up last time into a PDF.
Unless there's objection to okaying. Okaying that, and we don't need a motion because it's an op, just an operational item, we will move on to the. Next big item of the evening, um, the Tacoma Beach Upgrade Introduction, Introductory Discussion. This is a very introductory idea. It evolved in line with, uh. Recommendations from several committees around maintaining facilities and, um, a few years back when Johnston Drive was, was first brought to the town. Some folks expressed interest in, uh, maintaining and improving Tacoma Beach, so with that, I'll, I'll toss.
This is very, very introductory, but, um, we were looking at doing sand this year. I think we got a little bit of a late start, but in, in understanding this, we have to go get a, a V E S shoreline permit to put. Sand on the beach. I know that, but then looking at the beach, it erodes away. Quite quickly, with all the water quality issues that we've had, you know, putting sand on the beach just to wash into the water and. Held cyanobacteria, we decided not to do that this year. We had some quick thoughts running around staff of doing maybe something like this in the future where we have a natural area in the front. We put two retaining walls, we have sand in between that, so you have a sand section and then grass with some picnic tables or something on top. We don't want to fully design it, make kind of look like that, but what we wanted to do is just get the flavor of the select board, if this is something. Worth even looking at, but we thought, you know, with that, you know, the select board would like to move forward doing some safety feature redesigning. Some things that we would push this to the Recreation Commission and maybe talk to them about looking at this and some of our other recreation facilities. For future projects. The one thing I did forget, the nice little rectangular pieces near the front. Um, we were talking about doing something similar to what you would see along Three Tomatoes or Salt Hill in Lebanon where they have the concrete barricades. That actually could have some planted flowers and stuff planted in instead of just putting waste blocks or dirty areas.
Means you can't drive onto the beach.
So you can't accidentally drive onto beach.
Because that actually happens.
Well, and the police chief's still concerned that something will happen there. There'll be an accident or something and someone will end up on the beach.
It's, you're, you have, and children, it takes them a millisecond to cover quite a few feet and you've got nothing to stop them.
I think this should be turned over to the C I P and I think there should be a discussion about funding some engineering for this project. I, I think this project should go ahead as I had suggested in the past, but I think it should come through the C I P to fund it for engineering.
I don't think it needs to be engineered.
I do think it needs to be engineered.
I think it should go to recreation and depending on the dollar amount, it would go to C I P. And I also think that in the past, we've seen some grant opportunities come through that are these kind of grants.
Definitely a good, good grant opportunity.
And I think this is a great idea. I will say, I've sent a few things on, um, I've had a number of people. Asked me to dump sand on the beach this year and to each of them, I said, this isn't the seventies, that's not what you do anymore. Cause we can't just be dumping sand in the lakes, so I think this is a really important thing to figure out how to make it so it's nice. And usable without being super expensive.
What else?
I have a question, is there something between like the idea and the Recreation Committee that is like. Somebody who knows how to build a beach, uh, lake, like, I don't know if there's like. A science of.
I think, I think that's why I suggest an engineer, because there's a, there's a question whether it should be handicap accessible. I think that's a legitimate question that should be considered.
Is it engineering or is it environmental?
The engineer has to have some environmental capability.
So my, so my view is this is an excellent thing to push to the Recreation Commission, the poor evaluation. We're, we're quite a ways from actually doing anything, that's not something that I would support for the next year, this needs to be thought through. The Recreation Commission has sort of a, a charge to work on our parks and, and stuff and. And envisioning what that would be, there's a big communication piece of that, there's a public engagement piece of that. And then there's a, well, so if this is what people want that to be, how do you go about doing it? And that would be their charge, it'd be how to. Figure that out and maybe two, three years from now, they've got a plan together. That could be executed and it doesn't have to be complicated, it doesn't have to be expensive, but getting a plan together that could be submitted for grants and. Other funding sources is something I think the Recreation Commission could take on.
Yeah, I would just give them the guidance of like, oh, something evidence based somehow.
I think the Recreation, uh, Commission is in the process of rebuilding itself. I think they're having a very difficult time absorbing. The athletic programs that are coming to us over through the area. And I don't think they're in the position to take on this process at this time. And yet I'd like to see it move forward.
And the Recreation Commission's not doing much with the athletics.
I guess, I think that this is the kind of project that attracts somebody to a Recreation Commission, if you have a concrete project that. You know, and if it's visioning, and I would go beyond just this one park of like, how are we evaluating our facilities? How are we maintaining them? What should, what should our facilities look like? You know, you, you hear people throw out ideas for various locations, what does that mean? That, that's a good function for the Recreation Commission, similar to how other committees work, like the Energy Committee when people have energy related ideas. They sort of vet them and work on them and bring forth ideas they think fit the whole town. The Recreation Commission can work in the same way.
You know, all of these ideas are great. Yeah, I'm really glad that you all are thinking about Tacoma Beach because I have been looking at it more lately and thinking about it. Just without even knowing this. It seems to me that when I was looking at it the other day and thinking what could be done there. Part of what I see that's hard to access is it has like a gully. And it's hard to step down through that, even I'm, been having some trouble with a leg. So I'm thinking a lot more about where I'm walking. So certainly maybe whether there's, you know, some design at some point or handicap. A ramp somehow that's diagonal or horizontal, you know, that can weave, so it doesn't go straight down. But I also wondered about some sort of terracing. With, I, I don't know, maybe you can't do railroad ties near water, I, I don't know. Okay, but some sort of terracing so that because it's such a steep slope. And then some steps, some shallow steps along the terracing. So that's just my two cents about what I was thinking about.
David Fagan, um, it seems to me that there's a joint role here for both, um, the Recreation. Committee, hopefully reconstituted, um, but also, um, there's gonna be a, a significant need for. For funding, C I P is one of those, grant funding is another. The, it's, it's not something that the C I P, that, that the Recreation Committee is gonna carry by itself. And I don't know quite how that. Is sequential or coordinated in, in, you know, in, in, at the same time, but it seems like, like both are gonna be needed.
Certainly, I guess, I guess my, my, my feelings would be the Recreation Commission owns sort of the organization of the parks. And so they would be putting together the overall plan and they would have to be taking a plan to C I P for grants. And sort of coordinating all of that, but yes, they would absolutely need more people and, you know. Presumably D P W would be involved at some point in putting, you know, the planters in, right? There would be coordination that town staff would, would have to execute whenever, if something were to be put forward.
I would think an environmental engineer would be very helpful in planning and design.
I, I could see Recreation Mission indicating what kinds of things are needed. But perhaps not having the design experience to really put it together.
Yeah, and they would have to bring forth, we need this if we want to make this decision. And that would be part of what they would be doing. They would not be responsible for completing all of the work. But they'd be responsible for engaging the public, identifying what people would like to see done, how it would be done. And then saying these are sort of the funding options, should they be making a recommendation, sort of how I would envision them. They'd be the project manager and coordinator role.
Just to suggest that the Recreation work with Conservation. And let them do it together because then.
This is what I tell you.
That's a big sea of, of rain garden on the side. But I think that would be, I think it's important to have that balance.
In, in order for an idea, anything to be successful, they will have to engage many people in town. Uh, but in order for it to be successful, it's also important for a single group to have responsibility. And so I, I'm suggesting that the Recreation Commission would have that responsibility. Similar to how the Planning Board has responsibility for the master plan, right? They had to engage lots and lots of people. But ultimately, the planning board is responsible for that entire activity. Right, other comments from the board?
I think that's perfect.
All right, so do we, um. Want to, I guess, go with Ed's recommendation and say, yes, go through some planning cycles, engage the Recreation Commission. And sort of moving beyond a very draft concept to some other ideas?
No immediate timeframe.
Well, that's the question.
The director of the timeframe, it's his operation.
Yeah, but it. Do you think we should have a timeframe, like a, send us a report by.
No, I was just listening to your.
Yeah, that, that, that would be my personal view.
If the world's best grant wandered into the park.
We just went to the end, the beach was covered in cat.
No, it, it makes a good point. Ha, having, having plans ready makes it so that you can get funding through, through grants.
Yeah, even this discussion helps. If something came up, we can say, this is something we might.
And people have.
Hopefully get grants for plans, because I don't want to see C I P money going to something that may not happen.
They really need somebody environmentally on it.
There's a lot of wonderful people our town has engaged over the years who are qualified to do this work.
Need a vote on that or?
There's an operational question, so I think. Yeah, I just wanted to get the, you know, I didn't want to bring it forward in the book, go, yeah, no. As we're just here with it, we'll move it forward.
Yeah, and I think that from an initial concept idea, you know, it's a, it's a good sort of thing. Let's move it, you know, consider this direction.
Um, Eric, I asked myself the question, which I did not raise, but, um, that I ask every time, which is, does this align, align with like our strategic direction? I think it does, so. That kind of, it's in our strategic direction, it makes sense for what we've said we want to be. It's priority wise, we're very capable.
Okay, so, um. Last item of business for the evening is Capital Improvement Program Committee Application.
Okay, and if I made an error and I put Brad Riches in twice, which I feel really badly after trying so hard to get me your application. I do have it on my phone and I can read it to you or you can talk to Dave.
So, so we have, we have three applications and there was just a clerical error, we have Brad Rich, Brad Rich. We're gonna clap those and do it single. But then, then we have Dr. Bupay and then Whitney Banker has also submitted an application, so we have three applications. There are two vacant positions for the, uh, Capital Improvement Program Committee. So, yeah, so I, I'd like to give you an opportunity to say something you'd like because there was a clerical error and we didn't receive your application. Though she does have it.
I wasn't expecting.
But, but you don't have to, we all know, we, we do all know.
Why doesn't Elisa just read us what it's?
There's, there's no problem, if you're comfortable with that, I, I want you to fair.
While he's seeking appointment as a member of the Budget Committee, the Chair suggested consideration of joint membership in the C I P Committee as well. I was also encouraged by the Chair of the C I, C I P Committee and a Department Head. What experience would you bring to this position? I managed and budgeted for a small business by private medical practice for over thirty years. As moderator, I presented over ten meetings establishing the C I P and subsequent changes in operational select board authority to expend. Until I retired from the moderator position, I. Until I retired from the moderator position, I followed but kept my opinions private regarding C I P and budget. Do you have any specific goals or objections you would seek to implement if you were appointed to this position? To understand the C I P process and expenditures and provide open, transparent, and responsible information to town residents and taxpayers.
The best are there.
I'm happy to have, and you're in question.
Yeah, I believe everybody's here, so.
Um, so we have two Budget Committee members already on C I P. They are Jim Fekke and Dmitri De Serrano, and I have concerns about overloading. You know what I mean? Like, why are we just taking one committee and smashing into the other one? But I think that two is is plenty. Um, that matters. You know, it's it gets borderline if we had three and then they were very close to, say, they had four people present on there, seven then, and three of them voted together. Like, it just gets really close to that line and I get very nervous.
Okay, any comments from the board? I'll I'll make one, which is um so C I P is for some odd reason falls under the Planning Board. If you don't have a C I P, the Planning Board does that role. And so we have to have a Planning Board rep. We only have one who I don't want to speak too much for you, Dan, but um has sort of indicated he may like to back away from that over the next few years. So we do have an opportunity with another Planning Board member to bring them on and um give them to have some overlap to to keep that uh position going.
Yep.
Um.
I've already told C I P this will be the last year I'll be chairman and this will be my last term about C I P.
Okay, so.
And probably on planning.
Right, so from a purely um I think there's some value in in having a second Planning Board member over the next couple of years. Um, I I do think that, right, we're a small town. We we can't have boards without overlap, but um, no, you know, four out of seven is a lot. Um, so my suggestion, and I'll I'll make it since we have to make a choice, is for Whitney and Brad fill the two positions. I do think we should fill both positions because we have plenty of applications and when people are willing to do the work, we should um, you know, we have three good applications and we have to pick two. And I would go with a Planning Board member for the overlap and um, I think the 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 over I think three from the Budget Committee is plenty of overlap.
I'm really uncomfortable with three.
I was gonna say, can I can I ask us a question because I don't know? Do we have to choose two people tonight or can we continue to solicit application?
Um, C I P is meeting right now for them to be involved in the process this year. It has to occur immediately. C I P will actually be done with its work by the first meeting of October.
Yeah, on on a practical level, if we don't appoint people tonight, it becomes for next season. Because C I P is working, completing their work over the next.
How frequently do they meet?
Every other week, every other week.
Are there two meetings left?
Yeah, we may have three more meetings.
We at most, we might have three.
So is it a crisis to be?
And one will be to the.
I'm just trying to get whoever is interested in doing it involved in the process this year would be helpful. Especially with the possibility of Dan retiring. I say possibility and leave it at that.
What I would say, Tracy is an alternate to budget. So that is ish, two and a half ish. And we have, but Whitney is an alternate to planning board. So you get a little bit of a liaison there. Um, I would I feel pretty strongly about not having more budgeting.
Do you have an opinion, John?
I tend to go with Kate on this.
Sound that we don't let you guys.
I mean, we ran with five last year. We haven't lost anybody. We just never get anybody.
Mm hmm. Well, and that's and that's a part of why I feel, I I do feel we should fill it out if we have.
Yeah, true. That's why I made this suggestion.
So, and I've I've made my suggestion for the two selections, um, with some logic that I would uh are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion, do appoint Whitney Banker to C I P and tell that we can do it individually.
Okay. Um, second. Second, okay. So is there any discussion?
So you're just recommending we put only one person?
That's my motion.
She is. However, that doesn't mean we won't have.
It doesn't mean you can have another motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so four to one in favor of Whitney. Um, is there anyone, would anyone like to make another motion? And I will make a motion to appoint Bradley Rich to the C I P.
Second.
Is there discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, Brad is appointed three to two. So we have filled out the the motions. And it is uh Brad and Whitney will fill those positions. Um.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your application. Appreciate that, David. Okay. And that includes the business of the evening. Um, alright, there are some administrative items and then we come down to public comment. Are there any comments from the public for us?
Just like if someone has a public comment.
Sure.
Um, I just wanted to uh thank all of the first responders, associations, police, fire, and ambulance. Uh, in case you guys didn't know, they just raised ten thousand dollars for a local family, the three of them, and I think that's something to be really, really proud of. Not only we have an awesome team that contributes to our town, they take time out of their personal time to do these pretty awesome things. So super proud of them and just wanted to say thank you. And the other thing I want to say is I wanted to give a shout out to our new crossing guard who is smiling and moving traffic a lot. So we're happy.
Any other comments from the public?
Is the crossing sign popping on yet?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very.
I just had to go by at the time, so.
Great.
I tried.
Go by, give it a give it a press, a lot of fun.
Is there any other business to come before the board this evening?
No sense in saying.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, opposed? Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate you coming out tonight and providing a big event. Thank you.
Signatures.
That's what I was, just they just signed this again, just to be on the same center. It's everything that's a signature line.
No, I'm not that bad, man. I just got them.
You can do my flaky hands?
Lindsay. Lindsay has her hand up. We've adjourned our meeting. Sure, she has some, oh, she might have come in for us from about the election.
Sorry, Lindsay.
I just have a reminder for you, and I'm sorry, I I was thinking I would do that with the inspector portion, but I I didn't realize that that was not conversation. So anyways, I don't want to remind all the select boardmen, people, sorry, that um this Sunday, uh, we'll be setting up for the election. Love some help, uh, eleven o'clock at um eleven A M. At um the community building. And then um also that I will expect everybody to be in attendance at some point in time on September tenth. Um, Tuesday, primary, we definitely need all hands on deck um in the evening or at the at the end of um the night when polls close to to count ballots. We've got two different sets of ballots, um, write-ins, all of that kind of stuff. Um, and then since we're here, just mark your calendars now for November, please. Um, we always set up on the Sunday before the election, um, and I usually aim for eleven o'clock. Um, we can get it done within an hour. Um, the optimal number of hands is like five, right, Tracy? Tracy's Tracy's my old hat, so not too many, but enough. Um, and then I I I don't need everybody all day this coming Tuesday, but I will need everybody all day at the general election. So please mark that off on your calendar. Um, you will have jobs to do and it's a very, very busy day. But beyond that, um, hope to see, you know, a couple, a couple of folks on Sunday, um, and I will expect everybody to put time on Tuesday. No, not all of you. I'm just whoever can, whoever can. Tracy often helps. Um, I'll I'll probably pull from a couple of other community members that that help regularly. So. Okay, thanks.
Good plan. Thank you.
Good plan. Sorry, I didn't get that in on the public comment. I wasn't sure where to bring that to you all, but.
What time do you want to do it Sunday?
Eleven. One one.
Got it.
Eleven A M. Okay.
Great.
All right, see y'all.